Welcome to the City Schools of Decatur School Board Meeting, our monthly regular meetings. Today is June 8th, 6:32, and we're going to go ahead and get started. All board members are in attendance, as well as the superintendent and also District Council. So first, we will start with a moment of silence. Okay, if all board members will rise, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We see the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, with the visual liberty and justice of God.
All righty, and just looking at the agenda from last board meeting, are there any revisions? No revisions, so that's enough. And in the minutes, was there any revisions on the minutes for anyone? Should have revisions? Superintendent? All right, so we can move on to the spotlight.
So I'm really excited to highlight our graduating class of CSD aspiring leaders from the CSD Leadership Academy. This was a two-year project in the building. We started this two school years ago before COVID. The applicants applied, they got accepted, we started running the class. We had about three sessions, then COVID hit and we had to shut down school. But we didn't let that stop us. Once we kind of made sure that everyone was safe and we were ready to do school again, we rebooted the program and we moved it to the virtual setting. So I am going to kind of give quickly just an overview of what the program entailed. The participants had required readings and required writing. And they submitted several different writing assignments based on their reading. And I'm just pleased to say I and Esten did most of the scoring of their writings. They're just amazingly talented leaders in our district and learning their perspectives on how to apply, what they're reading and learning into actual school settings was really amazing. We had seven sessions. Our first session was on overall leadership for CSD and just some leadership in general. And then Dr. Huddleston presented the next session on our equity work and how we use equity lenses in all that we do. Esten at this point, Noel presented our operations and technology. At this point, this was still Daryl, because this was our last in-person session, which was Daryl and his team presented curriculum and instructions, so it tells you when this was. Then we took the COVID pause and we rebooted again and we started in January. And then we had a presentation on back then, it was supposed to be special ed, but we created it to be state and federal programs and planning and assessment, and that was Princess Holt and Heidi Watley. And then Courtney and Lenita presented a session on communications and finance. And then Ms. Walker and Ms. Marcia Fowler presented the final session on staff evaluation and the staff support department. And then there was a final project where all the members had to take a rubric about how you assess a school improvement plan, what should be in it, how you develop them. And they reviewed and audited their school improvement plans and then had to write a paper on what they saw in their improvement plan, where it rated on the rubric, and then what were the highlights, and then what were some recommendations they would give to the principals to say, hey, here's how we think you could improve your school improvement plan going forward. And they did phenomenally. It was such a great class. Then I met with each member individually and just did a final exit conference on the program overall to get some of the things they liked about it, that they think we should continue, as well as, hey, how can we make this program better when we start it up again for the next full year? So one of the things that they, every member that I spoke with highlighted was that they really enjoyed hearing from each cabinet member about their department, what their daily activities are, how they run their programs. They really appreciated how it really gave, put a face to the name when stuff comes out from finance, when stuff comes out from staff support. They really enjoyed that. We also did several case studies and scenarios. So each of the classes was a little bit of information sharing and giving them kind of the background, but then we gave them real-life scenarios. So I'll give you an example. When Courtney presented her session, she broke them up into groups and each group had, hey, there was a bus accident, how do you communicate what's happening? Or you're launching a new initiative at your school, what should your communication plan be? So every department did one of these real-life scenarios. We break them out into their subgroups, they took the learning that they had and they applied it and then shared out what they learned. So they really liked those as well. But I also am always about continuous improvement, how can we do better the next time? So I asked them, what are some changes they think would make the program even better when we do round two next year? So one of the things that they brought up was enhanced opportunities to embed leadership experiences in what they're doing. So they talked about if they could do classroom walk-throughs with a leader, do the observation piece with a principal or an assistant principal to see how that piece worked. Mentor, they also asked for a mentor so that as they go through the program, and in particular a mentor related to their leadership. So if they were an aspiring leader that wanted to be an instructional coach, or they're an aspiring leader who really wanted to move up into a principalship, have a leader that was mentored and matched to them. And then they wanted more role-playing opportunities. So if you were going to have a difficult conversation with a staff member or a parent, have that opportunity to sit with an established leader and run through a scenario. They also, one thing I mentioned here is to make sure we cater a little bit more to different pathways for leadership. So if I'm a classroom teacher, and I really love teaching and I just want to remain a classroom teacher, but be a teacher leader, what are some leadership opportunities for that and how do we create a program or part of the program to support that type of leadership instead of thinking everyone's moving forward in the same direction with the same goal in mind? And then we had four books we had selected for reading and they recommended we tear it down to two. So that was their feedback, and I thought that was great feedback. I was really excited to have that end of the class conversation with each of the participants. I just want to highlight our graduates. We had Carolyn, which goes by Carrie Beecham at Winona Park, Taylor Cross from Decatur High School, Erica Godfrey from Renfro Middle School, who Erica has now moved to a district level position and she is going to be our intervention specialist, working with Dr. Beam. Ebony Golden is at Clermont Elementary, Mariana Busta also at Clermont Elementary. David Harbin, when he started the program, he was a social studies teacher at Renfro. But I think a little bit with help from the Leadership Academy, he got the next position, which is now the Assistant Athletics Director at Decatur High School. Henry Hannah, who is a teacher at Winona Park. Eddie Johnson also got promoted through beginning the program to when we ended, and he was a classroom teacher at Fave and moved up into the Restorative Practices Coach and Support for Fave. So I thought that was great. Angelina Prophet at Fave as well, Jennifer Carubin at Westchester, Jessica Sturm at Renfro, who actually also, I'm sorry, that's a mistake, she's at Decatur High School. She moved up to an assistant principal role just before the class started. And Robin Tibbetts, who is also at Renfro Middle School. So those are our graduates. I just want to give a big round of applause and a shout-out. It was supposed to be a one-year commitment, but they did too, so. So we will open up Cohort Two applications in September. We will start the class in November. We do a once-in-a-month meeting. We'll probably do a little bit of a blended in-person Zoom model for the upcoming course. And just so people that are interested in applying, it's a three-year, sorry, three-hour every month in-person or Zoom commitment. And then they can expect to spend about five hours a month outside of class time doing the work and doing the reading. So we're looking forward to doing Cohort Two next year and growing our leadership in all of our staff throughout the district. So that is our spotlight. Yeah?
Is there anyone who applies, accepted, or is there a cap on applicants?
We capped it. I think we got about 20 applicants, and there's an application process and a scoring rubric, and we accepted 12 of the about 20 people that applied.
Okay, and is that your goal for this next cohort?
We'll see. We wanted to keep it small for the first time to make sure we had a good program and it was successful. So depending on how many people apply, if it was in a manageable number, we can take everyone or have to kind of see what our numbers look like going forward. But I would assume we keep it between 12 and 20.
And then for an educator who completes the program, what does that mean for them? Are they given extra consideration when they apply for a job?
Oh, great question, Gina. So two things is through the program, I offer resume coaching and interview coaching. A couple of the candidates took me up and they sent me their resumes. I helped them, you know, edit their resume, make sure they were highlighting the skills that I think they really should highlight. And then I did mock interviews and gave them input and feedback on their interviewing process. So that's a nice little benefit for them as well. And then as positions open, I say to the principal, hey, these people are from the Leadership Academy are interested. And even Cohort One, even though next year we'll build on Cohort Two, I'll keep that list of, hey, here are leaders that we have basically been on these ones. We're on a two-year interview process, we know they're qualified, we know that they're committed to CSD, and we want to see them rise.
And how did you feel about the number of male teachers that you, applications that you received, or teachers of color? Just how did you feel about the group?
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty good, a pretty well-diverse group from the beginning that applied. So I think it was very reflective of our values on equity and promoting equity and leadership.
Board members, any more questions for the chairman? So thank you so much for that spotlight. So we will move to public comments. Shayna, how many do we have today?
We only have one today.
All right, so while you're getting that ready, Shayna, just a reminder that you'll have three minutes. Please let us know how you are associated with the City Schools of Decatur. And just make sure if there's anything personal, that you need to address something personally, there's another avenue for that. This will just be a forum where we will listen. We don't typically engage back and forth during public comment.
Coolly organized.
Thank you.
Yes, and yeah, good evening, folks. How are you doing? Since I'm the only person, maybe I should get 12 minutes today, but I'm just joking. Thank you, thank you, School Board, for all that you do. I do want to speak about the announcement, the findings, that the former superintendent did not commit any infractions. And I have brought this up at every meeting, I think the last three, four meetings, that I still feel like our attorneys have to explain why this process went awry. I am concerned that if we don't have measures in place, if we don't have structures in place, this could happen to the next person in that office. The community needs to have faith that there is oversight, and I think that was a problem. It didn't appear there was oversight from the board. The superintendent was managing their affairs. It was perception, and if that perception was wrong, the board needs to come out and clearly articulate how it is that they do provide oversight over the office of the superintendent and ensure that there is confidence within the community. Again, I still want to bring it up, Wilson, Martin, and Downs. I think that there's some culpability on them. We need to interrogate whether they did, they provided the services that we've contracted towards them. There was too much drama, unnecessary drama, and we didn't notice. Shifting topics, thank you for allowing the Director of Career and Technical Education to speak and present at the last meeting. I continue to stress that I think it is critically important in this 21st century that the skills we are equipping our students with lend themselves to things career-oriented. I think, I think that there's a lot more opportunities for technical careers right out of, out of high school. So as we, how we continue to develop our students to preparing them for the 21st century, I think is critically important. Thank you.
Thank you, coolly. So that's the only public comment, so we'll go ahead and move on to the superintendent's comment.
First, I just wanted to give another shout-out to the graduates of 2020-21. I wasn't at the ceremony, but I heard it was amazing. I heard the kids were great, and I heard there was a lot of love and appreciation for having it in our stadium. And then I also heard that there was a rainbow that came out to celebrate. That was so fun. Some great job. Rachelle and her team did an amazing job organizing the whole ceremony. So just a big shout-out to our high school team. Did also want to plug for our Launchpad for Learning Now. And again, this is a nice, a joint venture between City Schools of Decatur, City of Decatur, as well as the Decatur Education Foundation. It is going to focus on acceleration for learning. How do we set a good foundation for our students so that when they jump into the classroom on the first day, they are ready to take off and learn? Previewing what the school days will look like, as well as embedding really fun social emotional learning for our students to help get them back to a sense of normalcy. We've got the dates here. There are going to be two cohorts, July 12th through the 15th and July 19th through the 22nd. The camp is going to run nine to 12 all of those days, depending on what cohorts you're in. We are only going to do K through eight. There is additional summer programming going on at the high school, so they're not going to participate this year, but we're going to bring on ninth grade for next year. The cost is $115 per student, and then there is scholarships available for any parent that needs a scholarship or a full or partial scholarship. We have those available. We have the information for signing up is on our website. It is pushed out through direct emails to families, as well as being shared on our Facebook page. So really excited about it. And this is another place where I tapped one of our Leadership Academy participants, Eddie Johnson, to lead the program, and he has just done a phenomenal job. He's taken my vision, he's making it a reality, and then he's also tapped other leaders from the program, Angie Prophet, Ebony Golden, and Robin Tibbetts, to help him as kind of assistant director. So they've just done an amazing job. And this is why I love developing leaders, is giving them that opportunity to shine and take things and run with it. So I just set the vision and they have done it. We've done check-ins, and at every turn, I'm so impressed with the work they're doing. Just want to give a quick overview of mitigation plans and what is coming up for the next school year. Just as a reminder, we are committed to full five, five full instructional days next school year. So five days a week, full instructional days, as well as making sure we have embedded learning support throughout the school day and after school, as well as in some of our breaks. We've got enhanced enrichment programs and support programs that will be taking place during the fall and the winter break. And then I did want to share, just update again on mitigation strategies for next year. I know there's a lot of new controversy about wearing masks, but City Schools of Decatur is committed to highly and very strongly doing everything we can to make sure all staff and students wear masks when they are in our buildings together, when we cannot guarantee that everyone has been vaccinated. So this is another area that we are very fully committed to using this mitigation method as one of our main methods of mitigation when students are in the building for school. So parents, please don't worry or stress about that. That is one of our top priorities, to make sure that we are highly encouraging and doing everything we can to make sure that all staff and students continue to wear masks, at least for the first semester. And we'll kind of see what the CDC says, and as they make very changing recommendations, we'll update our policies accordingly. We also want to make sure that parents know, our another mitigation strategy is if they aren't feeling well, they should stay home from school. We put out several opportunities for students, for parents and staff to provide feedback on what does our quarantine plan look like with students in this school, if they have to stay home when they're sick, or they have to test a positive for COVID, how we can make sure that education is provided seamlessly, the students won't miss a beat. We've got lots of feedback from staff at every school. We have input from parents as well. And then I'll be presenting what those final, what that final plan is for quarantine learning options when we come back in July. Hand hygiene is another hugely important thing. I think we've learned that washing our hands is such an essential task that we haven't done, I think, previous to COVID as much as we probably should have, but now it's elevated to be such an essential part of our mitigation strategy. We're going to continue to limit school visitors for next school year. We still think that until we have updated guidance from CDC, that we want to continue that mitigation strategy as well. Also, high priority of using outdoor classroom spaces. I was at Tally a couple weeks ago, and Billy was walking me through where they're going to be setting up tents and opportunities for students to be outdoors for lunch or class time. So I think each school is working on their plans. It's how they are going to create some outdoor space that will be shaded so students can be outside. And continuing our cleaning procedures, if you've been in one of our buildings, you have seen how meticulous and spotless they are. And Sergio is 100% committed to keeping that going for next school year. And then we will continue to do viral testing next year. We did get a modification to our MOU with DeKalb County, but now we can also test, viral test, not just the students that are showing symptoms, but anyone that is in close contact as well. So we're enhancing our viral testing options. And then next week, I am meeting with our mitigations team to finalize what our quarantine plan will look like for next year, and we'll be presenting any updates to that policy as we move forward into July at the fourth meeting. So parents can look for communications coming out in early July, even late June, on what we're thinking some of those changes will be, so they can start processing and thinking about what is the best option for them and what they're, how they're feeling about our mitigation strategy. And I just want to say, we continue, I think I check the CDC website every day, twice a day. Have they changed the recommendation, are they wavering on something? Lots of people on our mitigation team also work at the CDC, and they'll kind of give me a little nudge and say, hey, I think an update's going to come out in a week or so, so keep checking the website. So we keep looking to the CDC to help us frame what mitigation strategies we are using. We understand that the state can make some recommendations, but we are going to rely on the scientists that know the disease and know how to prevent the disease. Specifically, because our youngest students will not have the opportunity most likely to be vaccinated, that one mask is going to be so important, particularly for our younger students. We're seeing hospitalization rates increasing for younger kids, and we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep our kids safe and healthy. So we are really leaning on that CDC guidance and the experts in our mitigation team to make sure that we've got a plan that is 100% ready to go. Just want to give a quick update on our budget for next school year and the process that we are in right now. So the board is tentatively adopting our millage rate, well, we tentatively adopted the millage rate of 21 at the May board meeting. So as a reminder, this is a .75 increase from our current millage rate of 20 points, excuse me, 2.5. The district, though, and we have received our tax digest, so we know a little bit more about what many million from this tax bill will look like. But we're still moving ahead with three public hearings to do the final approval for that 21 millage rate. However, the three public hearings are scheduled virtually for June 10th, which is coming Thursday. We have one at 8:00 AM and one at 6:00 PM. Our third and final hearing is June 22nd at 6:00 PM. Followed by that 6:00 PM meeting, we will have a final board vote, a specially called meeting at 6:15. There's additional information for that on our website for any people listening, questions or want to attend those meetings. And we do anticipate, based on our tax digest that we received, that after we have approved the millage rate, we will also be very, it will be very likely that we can amend our budget to also increase the cost of living for all CSD staff. So really excited that even though we are going to have to raise the millage rate, we will raise it. However, I do feel that raising it will still provide us the opportunity to do the 1% COLA for our staff, which is so important. Again, along with budget is enrollment for next school year. And I just highlighted here, K5. Our six, 12 numbers are pretty close to what we would anticipate them being. However, we are seeing a drop, in particular kindergarten and first grade enrollment numbers. So I've just gave a snapshot here, the total numbers that we're below student projection right now is 249 students. And as you see, the, where we're below projection are the red. If we are above projection, those are the green cells there. And just trying to get information out to the community about our mitigation strategies, about returning to school and the in-person learning. So what we're going to do is host five open house enrollment events next week, every day of the week, starting at 5:30. We will be at each of our lower elementary schools for a presentation. I'll share information with parents about our mitigation strategies. Our principals are going to share information about what school looks like after school, because I think we need to help parents see that, yes, they have strong mitigation, but school is still going to be a lot of fun for our students. And they need to know that even though we do have safety in place, it is going to be a fun and a really exciting learning experience for our students. And then we'll also have our registrar for the district there sharing with parents, here's what you need to register, here's how the registration process works. And then we're going to open the buildings for tours, so parents can walk around and see the building. So hoping to get some good turnout for those. We've got communication for these going out in several different media venues, so that parents can sign up and attend those events. And then I finally just wanted to, along with budget, talk about Wilson Center staffing. This is an area that had come under scrutiny in the previous school year, and I want people to know that I am committed to making sure that we do not add any funding, any necessary, unnecessary costs at Wilson Center, and if possible, decreasing the cost of staff at Wilson Center. And with that, as I've been looking at the Wilson Center organizational chart, I'm not going to replace my previous position as staff, but I'm going to take on as superintendent several of the responsibilities that I was doing also as assistant superintendent. But there are certain things that I can't continue to do within the scope of what I'm doing, and mostly because, most of it is, or not most of it, but some of it is, as a superintendent, I'm the final person that people come to. So in my previous role, I could make a decision and support a different department or support something with student discipline. If there was an appeal, it goes to the superintendent. However, sitting in that role, I have to delegate that to another person so that I can be that final person to get appealed. Some of those are student discipline, supervision of human resources, also supervising our research and analytics department, school leadership team, staff evaluations, and professional learning, TBIS, as well as our leadership development. So those are things that I have to find places to uphold those responsibilities. I am keeping the supervision of principals. That is something I'm very passionate about. We have an amazing team of principals, and they don't require a lot of oversight or management. But I feel very passionate about making sure that I am the person supervising principals, as they are kind of my, they're me in the school, and I want to make sure that we have a close relationship. And as well as our whole district improvement planning process. So that's another area that as the leader for the district, I feel that it's so important that that is part of what I do on a daily basis, focusing on our student results, focusing on our key performance indicators, so that I know and can, on any day when asked, say, here's how we're performing, here's the growth we're seeing, here's the improvement or the next cycle of coaching that we're going to implement. So as I'm working through this, I've got to create, also I want to create some alignment. The City Schools of Decatur have some weird naming conventions, where other districts don't use them. So I'm looking at how can we align things, even just naming conventions, which are cost-neutral, to be comparable with what's happening in other districts. So I'm still finalizing and fleshing out the details of what this will be. What I look, what I'm looking at right now is already saving the district close to $70,000 by this reorg. So really excited about how we can reorganize to be more effective and more efficient with our use of staff at Wilson Center, to make sure that we are being very frisky with our funds at this level. And that is all I have for superintendent comments.
Thank you so much, Dr. Furman. Board members, does anybody have questions or comments on the presentation?
No, I'm excited about being able to potentially offer the staff 1% COLA increases. I'm sure they deserve so much more, but I'm glad that we're able to do that.
I'll second your shout-out about graduation. When we were leaving, it was scheduled to run from seven to nine, and I think we were actually leaving at nine, and it was a beautiful ceremony. And the kids clearly appreciated it, showed a lot of passion. Wonderful to be there. be there. Louis, you said, I remember leaving the class event that ended on time. I don't know if any of you all did it for it to be a high school graduation. Kudos to that team. And the band played and speeches.
I second that. I'm very excited that we're able to do the COLA, cost of living increase for the teachers. That's very exciting. And also great work on the summer program. Huge. I'm looking forward to strong start to this school year.
I have a, I'm excited about the COLA, of course. And I really like hearing about the Launchpad for Learning. My question about it was the $115 cost and said scholarships are available. We talked a lot about how to make scholarships available in a way that they're actually used. And I'm wondering what you all have done in order to make sure that, you know, that stick shock isn't an impediment and so that you're actually recruiting all the people who ought to be the ones launching that learning, to have the money to.
Exactly. And that is a really good point. It's something we were contentious about from the start. So Eddie has been in contact with the schools and making sure he has the list of students that are in summer school or list of students that maybe we know may need some enrichment and reaching out or may need that extra step up or form of better foundation. And it's actively reaching out to those families and saying, hey, this is an opportunity and it's cost free for you. So they don't even see the sticker price. They know it's an opportunity. We're hoping they can come and doesn't even tell them it's a cost. It's a program we're offering.
Good, good.
And I have one more question.
Well, I had a comment. This is actually, I did enjoy the graduation. I liked being in the stadium. It made, you know, made me think of the one question that we've had some discussion about over the year, but also more recently about class rank and about the proposal to not do it and to eliminate class rank in some form. It's my understanding that a proposal was going to be brought forward.
At the work session on the 22nd. And then if we need to vote, we can vote in July.
That's good.
I just have one question, and you don't need to answer it now, but it's one that I think we need to answer and maybe we can look into more as we know more detail. But about the enrollment numbers, I think it's concerning just from a budget perspective. And I think that maybe at the next board meeting or sooner, maybe you could share with us, what some of the projected impact of that is and what we can do to mitigate.
Correct. And that's why we're doing the open house event. Like I was telling my staff the other day, I was like, if I need to go to people's mailbox and put a thing in their mailbox, I will do that. We're also a meeting with VHA tomorrow, or Thursday, I can't remember what day. But we're meeting to talk about how can we host enrollment events at VHA instead of having those parents come here, feeling that like, oh, I've got to go somewhere. We're going to go to them to enhance that registration opportunity because we know that some of those students have not yet registered and we want to make sure we're getting them the information that they need. So our first approach, it's a multi-tiered approach. So phase one is shake the trees, make sure people know that we've got schools, we've got a really great program for schools, and that is going to be a safety and working environment. Hopefully we'll get more students registered. After that, we're looking at open positions. So we will look at any leadership positions that are open in the district and say, if we haven't gotten the students we need, our next phase is only filling those positions within, within city schools of Decatur. So promoting from within for those positions. And then that will open up other positions that either we can look at, do we need to fill these? Do we not need to fill these? And then the very last piece would be then to look at staffing and say, do we need to adjust where staff are assigned? I feel very confident that getting these efforts out in the community will get more people enrolled at the schools. And then limiting the additional openings of positions will help us keep what we need. But we'll have better numbers after all this. And then we'll be able to, by the July 13th meeting, have more information.
Yeah, we have. I mean, it's been, definitely been a weird year. We always have a lot of students trickle in over the summer and maybe more so this year, hopefully than ever. And I was also wondering, we had planned, budgeted for additional positions to reduce class sizes. Have those all been filled or should we rethink those? Because maybe now that's going to take care of itself.
Those are coming from here. So they're already allocated in that, in that budget. And those are kind of protected for the year, for a year or month. But what we are looking at is, so like if we're over by 50, if we're under, let's say 50 students at Claremont, Winona Park needs a teacher and we have to transfer a Winona Park teacher over to Winona Park to fulfill vacancy. So we're looking at that process first.
Want to follow up? We talked during the early budget process about the potential of starting to take tuition students again. And I don't remember why we decided not to do it, but given the gap, I wonder if we should visit that.
Exactly. The other presentation at the June 22nd work session is, is that tuition options. And we just pulled some initial numbers. And obviously, basically, we lose money on tuition because we cannot charge what we pay per student as our tuition cost. So it doesn't end up really saving us or giving money to the district that we wouldn't have had just if we didn't have the students in roll. But we'll have specific numbers for you at that point. The other thing I want to raise with this is what I'm hearing from families is they were kindergarten two years ago. We didn't open up for in-person. They felt like they needed in-person for first grade, so they went to a private school for first grade and are going to stay another year and come back when their child transitions to the next level. So that's what I'm hearing is that those families that left us will come back not next year, but the following year. And maybe something we have to kind of come up with an intermediate plan to get a early year and then see, and then I'm very sure that after one year, we'll see our enrollment numbers come up, even if they don't come up like January after a vaccine is available and has been distributed for our youngest students.
Is there a state level or metro level conversation? Because this is not a.
Yes. I've been in conversation with Dr. Cheryl Watson-Harris in DeKalb. They're way below as well. So it's not just a CSD problem. This is every school district is seeing a decrease because of people decided not to enroll their kids for kindergarten or just do private for first grade. So it's a nationwide problem.
All right. Thank you so much for the update. I don't have much for my chair report today. Just wanted to piggyback on what everybody said about the graduation. It was an amazing night. And I think it was, it was needed. Like the community, I think we really missed coming together in a space where we could all be together and the focus was the children. Everybody was wearing a mask and following, you know, those rules. And it just, it was, it was a beautiful night. And I'm hoping that that's kind of the jumpstart of, you know, potentially getting, getting our community back to this space where we can be together and it not be a contentious, you know, space. So I was very happy about that and just want to shout out to the graduates. Congratulations again. I am so very proud of you. And I'm proud of our graduates every year. But this year was particularly hard. It was tough. And they experienced something that, you know, I won't name it. I didn't have to go through this. I'm going through this pandemic at 46. And I can't imagine going through it at 18. So definitely a shout out to you all. And I know you're going to excel in whatever you do next. We also had a chance to go to the DEF Celebration of Excellence and see the scholarships, the DHA Senior Honors Night, and a retirement celebration as well. So again, we're just kind of moving nicely back to that space of, you know, focusing on the good things that are happening in our district and the good things that are happening in our school. And it's just been a long time coming. So it's just been a great couple of weeks just tying up the end of the school year. And that was tough. We are, we're there. So I'm looking forward to next year. I too am looking forward to all of our students returning to school full time in five days a week, if that's what you choose for your child. And, you know, just getting back to some sort of normalcy. It'll be, it'll still be different because you can't come through a pandemic and not have some differences. But I think that it'll be, I can tell that, you know, with the summer school starting and then once we go into the school year, I think we'll start to feel more like we felt in the past. So I'm excited about that. As far as for board meetings, we will be returning in person and with an audience in the fall. So you will be able to start attending our board meetings. Aren't you guys excited? You know, instead of Zoom, you can just come on in and fill the room. But we will still have it available by Zoom. So you don't, so you can continue to attend that way. But we will start, I believe, the July meeting? We will start with the July meeting. You can start coming in person if you would like. It will be open, open to all, and we will be back up there, sitting up there. And lastly, I just wanted to go over the annexation overview for the SB 293. That was a long, long process. But we were able to come together finally. We were able to come to an agreement. We celebrated last month with just some amazing DeKalb representatives and people. And again, that was another celebration that, that day of, of just, you know, putting down all of our differences and being actually, actually coming together and celebrating something. So, so if you have a chance to look that up, SB 293, you can learn a little bit more about it, what it's about. And I think there's some press on the event that we had as well. If you'd like to watch that and see what we were able to accomplish. So that is all from my chair's report. And we're moving on to consent items. We have the personnel report, the school nutrition report, financial report, the East Plots Resolution, the Division Roofing Repair, and the Division LED Lighting for DHS and RMS, and the Division Wet Sprinkler System for Westchester. So these aren't really up for discussion necessarily, but I do want to just take a minute to point out the East Plots Resolution. So this is what we will be voting on this November, or would be voting on it here as a board, but also in November as a city. And this is in conjunction with Atlanta, the DeKalb part of Atlanta, and then also DeKalb County Schools. So there's not much that we can vote on or change, but this, we will be voting on that to move forward. And then we will be getting a presentation later on today on how those East Plots ones will be used. So with all of those consent items, do I have a motion to approve the consent item?
Please approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Chair votes aye. All right. So we will move on to discussion. And so the first section is going to be approving our updated board norms. We did have started on this on our last meeting. And I imagine that this would be a continued conversation that we will, we'll keep having. But there are some updates that we were able to get through. And so let's go ahead and discuss some of those changes and see if there's any discussion that we have on that.
I have one. On the section about board committees, I'll go through the audience. What it says basically is that our standard operating procedure is not to use board committees. We act as a committee of the whole. And there are a variety of reasons for that. It goes on to talk about what we might do if we choose to have a committee. It basically says that we're going to sort of prioritize SLTs. The language kind of makes it appear that we, that our policy would limit us to SLTs, which I think would be wrong. And I don't think that's what we talked about. I think we said that we would draw on the SLTs as a resource, but that depending on the committee, we might really want to go outside in order to bring other types of community members. And I just thought we might revise the language.
What section is that?
It's on page nine or page 78 of the book. I think it's nine of the, it's the last sentence. This is just a small thing. The last sentence says, if committee members, additional committee members are needed, additional local SLT members will be called upon to join the committee, period. Which makes it sound like, you know, a mandate or a limitation.
So I guess the recommendation would be to call upon SLT members as kind of the first phase of members, and then as needed, target other community members and parents.
It's hard in the abstract because you have to be thinking about what committee, why we're doing a committee. And so depending on the reason to have a committee, which we're saying up above is going to be rare. The composition of the committee is going to depend on the subject matter. And so I don't know, you know, whether or not, I mean, frankly, I would probably skip most of that language and just let us figure it out in the next board, figure it out at the time. But one way or another, I would just remove this. So even if it said, if additional members are needed, SLT members may be called upon or other community members as appropriate. Just something a little bit of this.
That sounds good. I know we have talked about those characteristics. I like that we, that there were some that kind of like, what does that mean? I like that they've been replaced with the IDLE profile. But the wording of that sentence, the end of that sentence before we have the bullets with the IDLE profile, "The school board of city schools of Decatur wishes to be thought of by staff members, families, community business, and fellow public servants as role models for our community and students by exemplifying the values identified that in our character."
I was wondering if the date on page four needs to be there. It says on October 14th, 2014. It seems like it was put there at the time that these board norms were written. But I feel like we're kind of reaffirming all of this. And that even sounds like it's past. So maybe just relinquish the date and just say the board adopts.
That raises a, I agree with you. And I wonder, we had a little bit of discussion about whether these ought to go in the policy manual, which I think they should. And if they go in the policy manual, we're supposed to have some kind of a way to kind of like edit history. I know that if we listen to Garrett, we would definitely have that in place. I don't know if we implemented it. But at the bottom, there's supposed to be like a.
Yeah. So maybe if we took it out of that paragraph, but, because I believe October 14, 2014, and then there was two or three years ago was the other one? Page four or 73?
For present purposes, we can just delete the, delete the dates, add it in the book, say when it was adopted.
And just do the edited portion toward the bottom.
I agree. I think it should be in the policy manual because actually some of this wording that we just added was copied and pasted from the policy manual. And it would also eliminate a lot of redundancy.
And we'd find it. We could find it.
So maybe that would also allow us to, instead of reiterating some of these things, we can reference other policies.
The other discussion.
I would just say that in the next revision, if we show it, maybe we'll just like look over a policy manual with how this fits into there. And then if someone could go through and like remove some of the redundancies and just reference the policy, you know, how board members respond.
Public comments.
Then there were just certain things that I think are already in the policy manual that we can just reference. And it'll make it a little bit more manageable in terms of length.
Right. And with the couple of changes that we need to make, do we wait to just vote on this? Since we're making a couple of changes.
Changes.
All right. Anything else? Will we move on? The last bullet, the school system one, it felt like that was kind of landed me on kind of a footnote. Page nine. I feel like we could maybe work on that one. Maybe that'll be a conversation for another time, but.
We'll sit down and move from good to great.
I feel like we could do a little better than that.
Right, wrong.
Yeah.
Actually, it doesn't seem like a board more.
Right. It's got to have something else.
I just wasn't really sure about that one.
Yeah. It either needs more or just take it out. But yeah, it just kind of stands there alone and it's not a very kind of.
Do you want me just to take out some school system one?
Yeah, it's that whole section.
Or the whole section.
Yeah, I would just delete the section.
The section is a little strange.
Yeah. It just feels like it came from somewhere else.
How that ended up in there, but.
Okay, great.
You can see good to great, Louis, from back in the day.
Leadership Academy.
Leadership Academy.
I think we're.
No, do you, did you know that?
No.
Ten years ago, that was the date.
Okay, all right.
That's what our value system.
Okay, so we will move on now to the facilities report.
Well, let me see.
Hello, Sergio.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Fairman, Madame Chair, Board Members, Cabinet Members, Staff, Community. Good evening. This is the CSD State of Facility Report, twenty twenty-one. The State of Facility Report established the framework for the District Facility Master Plan. The report provides a comprehensive overview of the school district and resources, integrating people, facilities, processes, and technology. This framework includes analyzing the enrollment projection, the full-time enrollments, facility utilization, and current needs, inspecting the facilities, the facility condition assessment, the per maintenance, and sustainable initiative. The enrollment in the City Schools of Decatur has increased by two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven students from two thousand eleven to twenty twenty-one school year. As with any projection, the district should pay close attention to the variables associated with determining enrollment projection. Any one or more of these factors can increase or decrease enrollment with the City Schools of Decatur. We are paying close attention to resident light bird counts, enrollment in elementary schools, open enrollment, no public enrollment, immigration patterns, and any housing growth. The current enrollment number is five thousand five hundred and seven students. Obviously, this is a lot of this is being affected by the pandemic. The enrollment projections presented by the cooperative strategies in this report were based on where students attend schools and are meant to serve as a planning tool for the future. But you can see in this projection, we were somewhere over here. Our number is still low, about right now, about probably about two hundred, three hundred students. So we are monitoring how that changed and what that's going to look as soon as we finish enrollment for next school year. There's the recommendation projection by the consultant firm was almost a plateau base. Is enrollment projection happened before COVID nineteen? The pandemic affected our enrollment numbers as FTE allocations. It is recommended that these projections are reviewed on an annual basis to determine how more recent growth and enrollment trends will impact the enrollment projections. The enrollment on this recommendation was about this line here. We are right close by, but obviously, we have to see how that's going to be affected by this year and maybe the next year, what changes we're going to have. In this graphic, we see the current school utilization rate. We will show a specific school location later in this presentation. The facility condition assessment evaluate each building overall condition, including roofing, structural integrity, critical systems, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electrical plumbing, transportation systems, as elevators live, building interiors and exteriors, ADA compliance, and others, including life cycle versus current conditions. The assessment help us identify deficiencies, current and remaining life cycle. Some examples of this approach. Some example, this approach of facility integrity, critical systems, as a roofing, HVAC system, the per maintenance, postponed activities, co-compliance, ADA, fire code, safety modernization, access control, safety equipment and control, signage, energy conservation, and sustainable initiatives and technology. A result of conducting the facility condition assessment, we identify the element that require attention, and that will create condition for potential hazards and the interruption of the normal operation. In this graphic, we see a screenshot of the school need for the next five years. Roofing, you can see roofing in a green color. That's one of our biggest needs. And air conditioning on a blue color. Document including site visits, maintenance issue, functionality, exterior envelope, interior construction, textures and finishes, exterior side like parking and fields, building system, building functionality, safety and security, and the facility sustainability. We collect information for each facility, including facility assets as an inventory, maintenance repair cycle and breakdowns, preventive maintenance, applicable regulation codes and standards, occupant service and requirements in life cycle. Now I'm going to go in detail on some of our schools. Westchester Elementary School with thirty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square feet, built in nineteen thirty-nine, eighty-two years old. The general condition is fair, and the utilization rate is about seventy-one percent. It's still under utilization. In this school, we have one cooling tower with fifty percent of water source heat pumps, air handling units, rooftop units as a part of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment. In this graphic, we are still seeing roofing and air conditioning as one of the biggest components in our priority to repair in this particular building. This is a floor plan, a roof plan of the area affected in this particular school. The roof material in this school is a floating gravel buildup, roof applying cold condition, wet core and insulation severe improper repairs, and fire detection equipment detected, noise sprinkle system present. The roof assessment include core samples and analysis, infrared thermography scanning, moisture nuclear density testing, which detects the presence of hydrogen inside the membrane, basically detects water because associated with replacement versus repairs and priorities. The roof plan color represent the current condition, green for maintaining, yellow or amber for restoring, these sections up here, and the red for replacement. These particular areas are surpassing or approaching the life cycle. In this case, we have a lot of water penetration on this thing. That's why you guys see the request for proposal for a lot of roofing replacements. Glarmon Elementary School with twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-five square feet, built in nineteen thirty-six, eighty-five years old. The general condition is good condition. The utilization rate is fifty-eight percent. It's still under utilization. In regard regarding the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, ninety-six percent of the City Schools of Decatur units are still running in a refrigerant called R twenty-two. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, said January twenty twenty as a day when R twenty-two is banned from production, which means supplies are shrinking because of refrigerant will increase, a grade increase from production, which means upgrading all equipment for our fourth and A equipment will be required. So it will be a more efficient and more effective and more energy saving when we do these things. This particular school require a new fire alarm system, HVAC controllers, and safety equipment. This is part of the, some of the equipment that needs to be replaced. Some of the risers is still in bad condition. Glenwood Elementary School with thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one square feet, built in nineteen forty, eighty-one years old. Your wall condition is good. Utilization rate is fifty-six percent is still under utilization. Yeah, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in equipment and roofing is still one of the biggest component. You can see IP equipment, it looks like it's a big number, but normally, this is considered for upgrades, the new technology, cameras, you know, you name it. It's still part of, no, that's a part of repair, but an important component to keep our buildings in good shape. This is some of the pictures of the roofing over Glenwood Elementary. As you're noticing, it's bubbling, blistering. This one is included in our schedule for replacement. Glenwood Middle School with two hundred thousand six hundred and twenty square feet, built in nineteen sixty-nine, fifty-two years old. Current condition is poor. The utilization rate is eighty-three percent, is well operated. As we mentioned before, air conditioning and roofing are the big topics for Glenwood Middle School. Almost fifty percent of the roof require replacement. As you see in this, in this floor plan, or roof plan, we represent the current conditions as a, as a the green color for maintaining, the yellow for repair, and the red for total replacement. You calculate, including the red and the yellow, we're talking about more than fifty percent of these roofs need to be replaced. Some of these roof condition also affect the air quality. And this is being an issue for Glenwood Middle School. So our goal is to get all these replaced close to the starting school year or by the end of this school year. These are some of the pictures of the current condition. This is the Glenwood Middle School chiller. It's reaching the life cycle, but it's still running in the refrigerator and R twenty-two. One of the projects that we have for this particular school is a sustainability project. We are extending their solar array in Glenwood Middle School. We are adding a hundred and eighty solar panels to the existing unit. This is going to happen before the school starts. This is a really nice project, and we're going to see some savings. And we will reduce in the carbon emission of this particular area. Decatur High School with three hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six square feet, built in nineteen sixty-five, fifty-six years old. Current condition is poor. Utilization eighty-six percent is well operated. As mentioned, similar case, the Glenwood Middle School roofing and air conditioning is high significance. We have chillers, we have water source heat pumps, we have energy recovery units that needs to be replaced. We are working on request for proposal, request for votes and bids, and other documentation, trying to get information, what is the cost associated, and how soon can we start replacing all this equipment. This is the work section of Decatur High School. We're trying to get these replaced as well in these coming projects. As I mentioned before, the colors represent what is to maintain in green color, what is to replace or repair, repair, I'm sorry, the yellow color, and to replace in red color. Some sections, as we call the sorcer, needs to be treated. That's what you see here. Some of these stuff are in pretty bad condition. Again, sustainability is another project for Decatur High School. Once we complete the, this section of the roofing, we are planning to install some solar panels on this area. And we are planning to install another solar panels on this area. The total on this project will be a hundred and fifty-six solar panels. This is part of the Fraser Center over here. But we need to do the roofing first. This is Winona Park with forty thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet, built in nineteen forty-four, seventy-seven years old. The current condition is good. Utilization rate is a hundred and one percent. It's getting close to the overutilized or overoperated. This particular building, we are calculating some bathroom renovations that require ADA compliance, waterproofing, epoxy floors, partition, fixtures, replacing air conditioning equipment, and kitchen equipment. This CLC, twenty-eight thousand one hundred and seventeen square feet, was built in nineteen fifty-five, sixty-six years old. The current condition is fair. The roof has a significant concerns. You can see this is just a rooftop, but this is water penetration in some areas. And we have, I'm sorry, we have about twenty-five RPU's units that needs to be replaced in this particular building. They're still operating at this point. We keep it running, but they are surpassing the life cycle. Fifth Avenue with fifty-eight thousand two hundred and six square feet, ten years old, the current condition is very good. Utilization rate is ninety-eight percent, approaching the operating level. We have Talia Street Upper Elementary with eighty-five thousand square, built in two thousand and nineteen, three years old. The current condition is excellent. Utilization rate is ninety-two percent. Again, over Talia Elementary, we have a sustainability project. We are extending the solar array over Talia, adding sixty-five, sixty-five more solar panels to the existing array. This is going to happen before the school starts. Oakhurst Elementary School with forty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet, built in nineteen fifteen, a hundred and six years old. The condition is fair. The utilization rate is sixty-five percent is under operating level. Again, for this school, air conditioning and ADA compliance are major issues, electrical and fire safety. We have some bathrooms that are no really ADA compliance. So we are planning to expand the size of the doors, install doors in the proper way, so we can accommodate for ADA compliance. Also, the, some of the stages don't have a lift. That's something that we are ma- making sure everybody is available to participate in every theater or any stage activity. The Wilson Center or Central Office with twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four square feet, was built in two thousand fourteen, seven years old. The current condition is excellent. The roofing represents some concerns. We are working to look in how we install a generator or possible installation of solar panels by using one of those Tesla batteries to power critical equipment. At this point, I go into stop for any questions or concerns.
I had a question, Sergio. First, that was a very thorough presentation, and the pictures really helped give us an understanding of some of the work that needs to be done. And you may have said this earlier, but how do you determine the condition of a building, poor versus fair versus good versus excellent? Is there a formula?
So it's a, it's a percentage of not just the square footage, but the, I guess, the cost of repairs. And that's how the consultant determine the condition. It's not determined by me. That's why we hired the consultants to determine the, how this building is operated and what is the stage of the building. It sometimes seems a little bit unfair because we have buildings, they have a lot of square footage as a Glenwood Middle School and Decatur High. But you are comparing these big buildings with twenty-eight thousand square, thirty thousand squares. So sometimes a little tricky, but that's how they, they come out with this information. Normally, it's based on, on the cost of repairs. Like you're noticing, Glenwood Middle School and Decatur High are poor because they have obviously a lot more square footage, and then it is bigger. You know, we have to replace almost in one of those schools, fifty-five, sixty percent of the roofing, which affecting indoor air quality as well. But also, air conditioning equipment for Decatur High School can cost three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, while, while for other schools may cost thirty thousand, you know. So, so it's, it's challenging, that part of, uh, apples to apples in that case.
That answers my question on why, why Decatur High and Ranpro both, both got poor, and then you have, like, Oakhurst built in nineteen fifteen, it was still fair, so that was a good question, because I was, I was a little confused on that as well. Anybody, other board members with questions or comments? Thank you, Sergio.
Thank you, Sergio, for this very thorough report. This kind of ties into another discussion we've been having, but are the funds coming, does this come from SLOST? Is this SLOST money or what?
It's all capital, yes.
Past that, again, November twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Uh, we have a lot of maintenance to do, obviously, just to keep our schools in great condition. So I appreciate that you're keeping us apprised of this, because these expenses are significant. And this is just a comment, but as I look at the utilization of these schools, it's very interesting just to see that few of the schools on the north side mostly, elementary schools are underutilized, and now we're just K through two. So we have deliberately reduced the enrollment day in the past few years, but it is interesting to note, you know, just that Winona, one of the elementary schools is kind of maxed out. And then also very interesting to note that the utilization at Fave and Tally is in the ninety, ninetieth percent of the capacity of those schools, and just we'll need to keep an eye on that, obviously, because, you know, like, I don't know what that means, but, you know, also, who knows what will happen with the enrollment this year, but we have a lot of, a lot of variables to watch, but we'll have to see if we need to shift, like, you know, at any point, some of our students around, just to make sure we're not bulging at the three, three to five schools. Um, we still have a little room, but it's kind of interesting to see.
So my question is maybe not really about the report, which I appreciated. I'd like to see that we're on top of making sure that our buildings are maintained, but more to do with the recommendations at the back of it, or actually the front of the report. And, you know, the recommendations that aren't really the subject of your presentation, but that are apparently developed from a committee we had, looking at what our priorities should be, may include the need to expand the high school to meet enrollment, the need to make a decision about athletic facilities. There's been a lot of discussion about either partnering with Agnes Scott or partnering with the city to make a track, Legacy Park. The need to expand our early childhood center by building and using the site that we acquired for it, just across the street. And then projected additional space at lower elementary schools. So we've talked about all of those things, uh, you know, forever, for the, for years. And for a number of years, we kept saying to the proponents of the track in particular, that we can't talk to you right now, because we have to do our facility plan, and the facility plan and the enrollment projections is sort of gotta come first. Once we get that done, we can do some long-range planning and figure out where we're gonna spend our capital improvement money. And then, and then COVID happened, and the whole schedule got thrown out of whack. But we need to get back on it and actually have a long-term plan and make some decisions. And the community's probably given up on us with the athletic facilities, I don't know. But, but we need, you know, we need to actually get a schedule and make some decisions and figure that out. And I'm disappointed that we haven't pursued the early childhood center to make more seats available, to make that center live up to its mission, which, you know, right now, it's too small to really do, in my opinion. So I guess it's a general question, but I think that we need to get this on the agenda, and we need to, we need to push it forward, instead of letting it just, you know, roll to the next year.
No, we're definitely looking at what the future planning is, now that the facility plan is done. Taking those next steps, I've already had a meeting with Andrew Arnold from the city about what we can do to cooperate on a track at Legacy Park. This is another reason why it's so important to get this SLOST approved, because that will be funding these projects. Because without the SLOST getting approved in November, we will have to pause on projects. So we can start the planning process and look at what's coming ahead, but definitely needing the SLOST to get approved, so that we can start actually doing the work.
I agree. I, I think the conversation about the early childhood learning was one we had years ago, and we put that on pause when we had to pivot and build Tally. And then we redistricted, we had a lot of work to do. That's been completed, and I think it's really worth revisiting that to just make sure that we are, I guess, maximizing the opportunities for a lot of students who need that boost, especially going into kindergarten and starting kindergarten, uh, already, you know, prepared. I think that'd be very worthwhile to revisit.
Just so that I'm not misinterpreted, I didn't mean that the Early Childhood Center isn't living up to its mission by doing a great job. I just think that we need to spread the benefits more widely, so that more people get to the end job.
Yeah, we can, we may have more stakes if we.
Right, more seats.
I just also want to give a shout out to Sergio. He is phenomenal. We had a admin council meeting the other week, and every principal just took some time in front of the, you know, our big meeting to share their, you know, thanks for Sergio and his team and the wonderful work that they've done. They have done an amazing job. The school is beautiful, they're clean, everything is running very smoothly. If there's an issue, he is on it immediately, so it has just been, it's been wonderful to work with Sergio. He's one of the best, just does a great job, so we want to thank him and his team for all the work that they've done.
Thank you.
I have a numbers question. Sergio, you may, Dr. Furman, you may not. What schools do we have non-permanent capacity still at? I know we made some major cutbacks for that at Glenwood.
And Winona Park.
Winona Park and Fave?
Well, we have, do, well, we have, okay, so Oakhurst has a few modulators that they use for maybe mostly special classes, not actual, not grade-level classrooms. Winona Park has, I think, two or three modular classes that are in use for actual grade-level classrooms. Oakhurst, Winona Park, and Fave, their students are all in the building for grade-level classes. They do, I think, music out in one of their modulators, and maybe a special class out there. But for the most part, Winona Park is the only school that is ha- that has students out in a modular for their actual classroom, for their grade-level classrooms.
I'm correct. Those are the modulators that have plumbing. Other modulators aren't nice. As a teacher, I always asked for the module, and then it's a touchy subject.
College Heights also has modulars.
Do we still have those?
Which one?
College Heights, or Early Learning Center. The new, yeah, they're brand new at College Heights.
That's what it was. I wonder, they redid those, removed them. Okay. I just hate the way that they, they say permanent capacity and tell us what the utilization is, whereas if we went to remove, was it Fave, we tried to remove some, teachers, and they weren't happy, but they wanted them, because they do serve a great purpose for specials and.
In years past, we've been, when we were overcapacity at certain schools, if people were moving in during the summer or enrolling during the summer, and that school was full, they were sent to a different school. Is that happening, or no, no, no?
Um, I don't, I have to check with Courtney on that. For the most part, I don't think so. We've really, the redistricting and the moving third grade up really allowed us to really keep kids at their home schools. I think it's very few families have to be, you know, like, transferred to a different.
All right, and so for last item for discussion is our Cognia report. Dr. Furman?
I am excited to finally close the last chapter on accreditation. Our final presentation on accreditation, this process started last summer at about this time. So I'm so glad we are finally done with the whole process and ready to look at the results at our upcoming summer leadership conference with district leaders and school leaders, to see how we can embed some of their recommendations in our district and school improvement plans. So just to give you a quick overview, I'm gonna just do a quick summary of what the accreditation process is, the tools that they use to evaluate it, to evaluate our district. Then I'll share the results of our district accreditation, as well as the College Heights accreditation, that was done as well, and then talk about next steps. So just a quick summary of the accreditation process, we, this is done every five years for every school or every district. City Schools of Decatur use the district accreditation model, so they are really looking at what we're doing as a district to lead district improvement and the continual improvement process. They check the school information just to really verify, are we doing what we say we're doing at the district level? Is it trickling down and being implemented at the school level? They rate us on three domains, leadership capacity, learning capacity, and resource capacity. Each domain has several accompanying standards, and it's different for everyone. I think leadership has eleven, re- learning has thirteen, and I think resources has eight. And then they assess us on what they call their IBR rubric, and it determines where we fall on their continuous improvement system, which is basically how do you gather data, you gather input, you implement, you monitor progress, and make sure something is embedded in what you do as a school system. So there is, this is the rubric that they use to rate us, and you'll see that it's kind of broken up into engagement, which is how do you involve your community and stakeholders? Then they talk about your implementation plan and processes. The result is how do you, what is the data you gather to see, is it working, is it not working? Sustainability is another piece of data, but looking at data over time. So are you using that data, not just one snapshot, but are you collecting and analyzing data over a three-year period, over a five-year period? And then the embeddedness is, yes, we say we're doing it, but when you talk to the stakeholders, can they talk about it as well? Is it just, hey, Dr. Furman's initiative, she's doing it, she's implementing this? But if they ask parents at Winona Park, they should also be able to say, here's what we do. Our belief is accelerating student learning or advancing racial equity. They want to hear that it's embedded in the community. So they rate us on all of those standards based on that rubric, and they'll give us ratings that are either we're insufficient, we're initiating something, we're improving, or we're impacting. And just to give you a summary of our results, for the leadership domain, there were eleven standards. And we felt, I felt really good about our leadership domain, is impacting, we have seven standards, which is top. And then four were improving. For the learning domain, we have twelve, they rated twelve standards. We only have one impacting. We have ten standards rated at improving, and we have one standard rated at initiating. And then for our research domain, we had eight standards, one standard was impacting, and seven were improving. We use all of those ratings to calculate our overall index of educational quality, and our total score for this reevaluation of our accreditation was three hundred and thirteen point thirty-nine, which is really good. So the number down below is, of all the institutions that they have accredited or reaccredited over the past five years, their average has been between two seventy-eight and two eighty-three. So we are above that average, which I was anticipating that we would be, and we're also above their threshold of, like, we're in their highest percentile, basically, so really good results. And they highlighted some strengths for us, and one, which is to me not a surprise for City Schools of Decatur, is this culture of care, concern, and mutual respect based on our beliefs of teaching and learning. So to me, when they shared that, it was confirmation of our teachers love kids, our teachers love their job, and love working in City Schools of Decatur. They also highlighted that we do send information out through multiple sources of communications with our stakeholders. They also really showcased and appreciated our equity work and how that was the core of everything that we do here in our school system. And they also, kudos to the board members, has highlighted our school board and the governing work that you guys do as a board. They did highlight some growth areas for us, but even though we have lots of communication, they, the feedback they got from our stakeholders was that our communication is not always user-friendly. That it's mostly a digital communication, and it's mostly one-way communication. So the recommendations for us here were to think about how we can create multiple modes of communication, not just, hey, sending out an email or a survey, what are some other opportunities for us to share our stories and to share information with our families? And then, again, with that is two-way communication. How do we get information back from what we've communicated and use that information to help improve our school system? And the other one that they highlighted was grading confusion. So the stakeholder group, particularly the parents, said once they get to secondary, like high, middle school and high school, the grading program that's used called Manage Back, great, great students' performance based on these IBR rubrics. And the parents shared that that makes no sense to them as a parent, it doesn't help them understand how their kid's performing. So that was a big area of concern from parents through the stakeholder process. And the other big area of growth for us of use of data, and they really, this was the hardest area for me to think about, because I'm such a data person. I love looking at data, I love using data, I love analyzing data. But I think it really pinpointed an area that is a big need for us as a school system. And they really highlighted that we need to take time and develop a very clear process for how we collect data, how we use data over time to inform our decisions. And just to give you an idea of how strongly they are, you know, the, the depth of this issue with us is the results in sustaining categories are the two that refer to data. So the result is, do we gather data just, do we gather data at all? And the sustaining is, do we look at data over time? And our score for these two out of four was a two, four point, or two point four for results, and a two point O on sustaining. And just to give you some perspective, on the other five categories, we scored anywhere between three point two and three point seven. So data is a growth area for us, and you will see, as I'm sharing with schools and principals, that this is something that I'm gonna be asking them for on a monthly basis, is I need to see your data. I want to know on a monthly basis how our students are performing academically, how our students are doing with attendance, what does behavior data look like? So I charge the principals with submitting monthly data reports to me, so that I can monitor that data and use that data to help us make decisions. The next step for us are, as a district, is to look, how do we use our strengths to improve our use of data? We know we have staff that are dedicated. We know we have a really dedicated community and parents that are supportive. How do we use that strength to help us take these steps on using data to make decisions? One of the pieces that we really need to dig into is grading. How are we grading our students? Are we communicating those grades effectively, so that it makes sense to students and to parents? And then how are we collecting and analyzing data over time? So that's the system accreditation. So College Heights also did their accreditation process, and their accreditation process is a little bit different than the system. It's a, it's a shorter process. They are rated on almost four hundred indicators. It's a lot of information. So they have five quality standards that they assess at our early learning centers. They look at purpose and direction, governance and leadership, teaching, assessing and learning, resources and support systems, and then using results for continuous improvement. They use, they, they gather data on these and they gather evidence, so they observe classrooms, they do interviews with stakeholders, they submit documents, they do surveys, so there are lots of ways they gather evidence to inform their ratings on this. And this was really exciting, because when Sarah and Carla shared this information with me, they highlighted this table, so the criteria that were met were three hundred and seventy-six out of three hundred and seventy-eight. Only two criteria were not met for College Heights, which they said, the evaluator said that's unheard of. They don't see very many schools with this high number of criteria met. So a big shout out to our teams at the Early Learning Center, Sarah and Carla and their teams do amazing work. So for College Heights, they highlighted these, these results for their institute, for our College Heights institution. Now, the color coding is a little different. Here it's yellow, but that's actually a good thing for their level, so we were glad to see that they were at the improving level there. And they also did classroom observations. Because our, the system accreditation was done virtually, they didn't do classroom accreditations. Had they been here in person, they would have also had classroom observations done. But they do have, they do have a requirement for early learning, that they do do classroom observations, so they went in via Zoom, watched classrooms, and came up with these ratings. A really good score is there as well for College Heights. So it, when they give the report for the Early Learning Center, they talk about power practices and strengths. So what highlighted, what they highlighted for College Heights was that it's a very collaborative community, very mission-driven. They highlighted that there's still lots of various programs at College Heights that support our students. Also highlighted that there is use of power standards and rubrics. So if you go into classrooms, one of the things I love about seeing College Heights is they use data ongoing. If I go off into a classroom, a teacher has a clipboard, she. If I go off into a classroom, a teacher has a clipboard, she's taking data on a daily basis on what potential our students are meeting, how they're performing, and sharing that information with the parent, as well as using that information to determine what next steps to take with a student. Like I've mentioned, it's very strong leadership at ECLC. They do such an amazing job. Garland and Suckers is phenomenal. And then their connection with their community. They really, really appreciate how the Early Learning Center plugs in with the community and supports our whole system. Some opportunities that they shared is, one definitely came from our parents, through their parent interviews with the parents moving from pre-K to kindergarten, wanted a little more help making that transition. It's a big transition to go from that pre-K classroom to one of the big schools, which is to me funny because College Heights actually has more students than some of our lower elementary schools. But that's a big transition and the parents share that they'd like a little more support with that process. They also shared that even though College Heights uses the school improvement plan, they do a beginning, a mid, and an end year check on their data, that there might need to be more enhancement of that and more regular checks on how their students are performing with their school improvement plan. And that they also highlighted that there are systemic inequities. And this really came from losing the, right from the start funding. So that's really where it came to us. Yes, we need to figure a way out to help support the families in our community that need that help the most, which ties into what Lewis was saying about, we really need to reinitiate that drive or how can we increase, like, increase the number of students that we're serving in our early learning center. All right. That is our system accreditation and our accreditation for College Heights. Are there any questions or comments?
Dr. Furman, is there a process for, for like the, I don't know if the language was standard, but where we receive like the impacting rating? Is there a process for, you know, how we will improve, you know, in those areas?
So that had to be, so our ratings were really great. So they're not, last time that City Schools went through accreditation, they came back a year later to check on some things. They're not going to do that this time because our ratings are high enough. However, just for me and my continuous improvement cycle, I want to see growth over time. One of the things that I'm doing with the tools is we are using the Cognia school improvement planning template so that I can monitor it over time and make sure that it's not just a random Google Doc, it is a embedded tool that we get through the accreditation, we don't have to pay our annual fee for accreditation, that we're using that tool to create some really nice public facing documents so that we can share that information with the public, create the data tracking system that we need. Another thing I love is when it comes next time, five years down the road, accreditation comes back up, we just dump in all of our work that we've already put in the tool so we have less, we don't have such a baby left next time around. So I will be monitoring those and making sure that we are moving forward on that.
Is this the same outfit? Do they just change their name?
They were bought. So it used to be.
Was it Advanced Ed?
It was Advanced Ed. Advanced Ed got bought by Cognia, merged with Cognia, and now it's Cognia.
Because the report is very different. Like you say, last time, the last report five years ago was not very complimentary. So this one, this is a nice change. I do think we should pat ourselves on the back. They said nice things about the board and their governance team. It should be noted. One, I guess, you know, one, it's not that user friendly in terms of being able to pull through and actually identify the action items. I assume that you're going to do that. You know, if they say you might want to review administrative regulation, whatever. You have to pull that out.
I also thought that the feedback was really specific and thorough. But I agree, it was just kind of, it looked like it just kind of gotten merged into one big paragraph. And I was curious, it sounds like you're tying it to documents that are Cognia related, but how does this tie into our district improvement?
So it really got, so our district improvement plan is really based on our equity, our framework for equitable outcomes for students, which are our three pillars of advancing racial equity, accelerating student learning, and building and sustaining a positive culture and climate. And that's where we tie in that work. So in the Cognia tool, we have a plan that is about accelerating student learning. We have a plan for building a positive culture and climate. We're going to embed our equity action plan within the tool as well. So instead of it being one massive, it'll be kind of specific action plans built into that tool. And it's just going, what I really like about the Cognia tool is it really breaks down the school improvement and district improvement process into really understandable and manageable chunks so that you can explain it clearly to stakeholders. One of the feedback pieces we got when we published and did our stakeholder feedback for our just general district improvement plan, there's a lot of education speak and language. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to parents and community members who want to look at what we're doing. And it helps us put it in that digestible language for our stakeholders. So while it will be lots of separate plans, they'll all tie together to really focus on those core practices that we've identified in our.
I think that makes sense because it looks like a lot of their data recommendations could very well feed right into that as well as our recommendation shot communication. And I, just one other comment, the transition from pre-K through K to K, I think we need to also just be very cognizant that that's not, or shouldn't be specific to just College Heights to our elementary schools. Anything we do for those students, we should be doing for any student in the community because many, many of our students are coming from different pre-K programs or.
And I'm glad you raised that point, is I actually had a really great conversation with Dr. Beam about how we do kindergarten registration and re-envisioning that process to make it more user friendly, where parents, instead of all parents having to come to Wilson Center to register their kindergarten, taking it back to our schools so that they can see the school and need the principal and be, just have more of that community experience.
Well, very good report. Yes, I think we should definitely pat ourselves on the back as a board, as a district, as, you know. That's, again, just kind of goes back to my chair report on just celebrating and, you know, winning out the wins. And it doesn't mean that we disregard what we still need to work on, but just, you know, a reminder that we do have a great school system. So thank you for that report. So moving on to future dates, unless anybody has any other comments on the Cognia report? Future date? When is the, Shana, when is the GSBA summer? Have they joined up this year? Have you signed up? Is this weekend? I never know.
Okay, we've got a lot in our place.
Yeah, that's probably why I just.
So the future dates that are on the calendar, the taxpayer bill of rights hearings that are coming up, the special board meeting on the 22nd for the final approval of the Nill's rate, and then the board work session on the 22nd.
It will not be at the Hall of Rights here.
Any other future dates anybody wants to bring up that we need to talk about? All righty, well, that ends our meeting for Tuesday, June 8th at 8:10. We are adjourned.